Jim.
Good evening, everyone. Like to call this regular meeting the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, April 18 at 6:30 PM. Call the roll.
Sorry.
Here.
Asher.
Here.
Here.
Also present our Service Superintendent Baheri and Fire Chief Grossenbaum. Please Chief Senator has an excuse absence this evening. Like to ask him when his plan and please honor the flag.
Let's. And to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 4, 2023, regular trustee meeting.
Second, I have some minor changes.
I noticed Krista Woskowski's last name needs an S in there somewhere.
Okay.
Martha, just let me know when you're ready.
Go for it.
Page six, the last paragraph right before trustees was actually the Planning Commission, not the Zoning Commission, for that April 6 meeting. And then I have language here at the next paragraph when I was presenting ODOT. ODOT is looking into, not will provide, the traffic study for Hinkley Elementary Traffic on Ridge Road. And I'm going to have you remove Medina County will also be installing because Medina County is not a part of this conversation. It's specifically ODOT signage on Stony Hill and 606. And then if we could just insert here too, that ODOT presented that Highland Schools will be responsible for traffic on Ridge Road outside the school, I would appreciate that as well.
Okay, if you would, if you would send me.
I can send it to you. And that's all I had.
Any other changes?
No, sir.
Move to approve as amended.
Second as amended.
Seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
Chief Grossenbaum.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Our request appropriations not to exceed $3,300 for front and rear brakes on Squad 37-2 from Liberty Ford in Brunswick. They now have a truck service center up there. They just opened up. I'd like to send that up and get new brakes.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Augustine. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, really quick, before we move to swearing in, we have blood drive this Sunday, or I'm sorry, this Saturday. Check the Red Cross website for openings. And then I will be out of town next Thursday to Sunday at the Fire Department Conference in Indianapolis with my son. Sean Barrett will be in charge while I'm gone.
Well.
Next item that I have is request to hire firefighter EMT James Guckel at a rate of 1478 per hour and a one-year probation effective immediately.
So moved. Second.
Movement seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
Like you.
Yeah.
You're go by the flag.
Family members, you can come closer. You don't have to zoom it in.
I told you, Jim, we take pictures very seriously here in Hinkley Township.
Be in picture, right?
Sure.
Baby?
Yeah.
Okay. Raise your hand. Repeat after me. I, Jim Guckel.
I, Jim Guckel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a volunteer fireman for Hinkley Township.
Of a volunteer fireman for Hinkley Township.
In Medina County, State of Ohio.
In Medina County, State of Ohio.
During my service in the Fire Department.
During my service in the Fire Department.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jim.
Thank you. All right, so it's right there. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome board. Yep. These guys will, you're in good hands with getting out, getting outfits with all their stuff. That's all I have.
And you're going to stay for the duration?
No, I gotta go to work. I gotta work the other job tonight.
Um, Chief, before you leave, I just wanted to thank you and Chief Senator, who's not here, and also zoning inspector Tom Wilson, for coming to the annexation hearing and testifying for the township. You all, all three did a very good job, so I want to thank you for it.
Yep, no problem. Hopefully helped with something.
Hopefully.
Anything from the community for the chief?
Thank you guys very much. Stay safe.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks for coming up, guys.
Good night.
Good night all.
Be safe.
Good night.
Mr. Baheri.
I'm the first. You want to go over the road bid before I?
Yes, we, we've all received the bids for the paving project for the Boston Road. East of Ridge. And the Millway, who we worked with before, a good company came in, Lowest and Best. And I think we would like to move forward with awarding that contract if everyone's in agreement.
Agreed. Yep.
Okay, so first I have on my list is a motion to adopt resolutions to contract with Millway Paving Company. For Hinkley Township 2023 paving program, the cost of $50,516. paving section will be Boston Road from State Route 94 to the dead end of Boston.
With the cost to be shared.
Yeah, that's.
With the city of North Road.
Yeah.
In accordance with the agreement.
Yes.
In place.
Fifty percent.
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Asher.
Oh.
Call the roll.
Swedick?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'll read them.
Okay, so second that I have on my list, we got the approval from Rector to go ahead with the purchase of our cabin chassis. So for my second thing I have is request for appropriations to purchase Mack Truck Cabin Chassis from Arnar Truck Sales through the ODOT contract 023-23 at a cost of $127,900.
So moved.
Second. Did you make that a resolution? Resolution?
Motion for resolution. Move is amended.
Second as amended.
Swedick?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
And then also last on my list here. Is request for appropriations to purchase a Milwaukee cordless pole saw with cordless electric chainsaw kit through Humvee boat at a cost of $789. We're going to be replacing a couple of ours up there, a couple of Echo saws that we have. When I price all this out singularly through Humvee boat, like each individual item, you're right up around that thousand dollar mark. So this is like one of their bundle deals that they're doing right now. So with everything that it comes with and one of the 12 and a half hour batteries, it's a pretty good deal. And, you know, trying to look into moving this some battery operated tools here too.
Very good.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Asher. All in favor?
Hi.
This is actually two units is what I'm seeing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And that's not all I have for tonight.
I am going to scoot to the end. In your packet, you will see the specifications for road type. There was a question about a line in the existing resolution.
This was the one we approved last year.
Correct. The, the line in it was final approval requires adoption of a trustee resolution. So in effect, that may have made, made it required a resolution regardless of what they chose. And the thought process was put these in here as hard line. These are options that they can choose from in accordance with the specification as laid out. And any deviation from that would require a new resolution. So if the trustees are in agreement with this, I had this reviewed by the engineer's office and prosecutor's office for content and accuracy, and they were both okay with it.
Isn't the information with regard to the urban subdivision and rural subdivision standards specific from the engineer's website? Because I see a lot of it removed.
What was removed was just re-appropriated. You'll see that it's, it's broken out now into. Because it was dependent on whether it was a conservation development or non-conservation, whether or not you could use one or the other. So now it's broken out and clarified. And that's why, one of the reasons I wanted to do that was to provide clarity to anyone looking to develop.
I see that. That's the additional section underneath.
Correct.
I have objections. So the third paragraph under rural subdivisions, would that be urban subdivision specific to conservation developments? The blue?
The one that has rural subdivision in bold?
No, um, below that. So we have urban subdivisions, rural subdivisions. And then the next section, there's no title for that. So that's.
That's you have an either or there.
Okay.
So, so the, the second part of that is actually an upgrade to put curves in. You have a developer desire to put a curbing in as opposed to.
I see it.
Using the enclosure. It's more costly to them, but they may want to do that. But to do that, then they have to put the wider road bed in and, and it's more, like I said, it's more costly.
I see it. The only thing I would suggest as potentially changing is because I missed it was making that or all caps. At the end of rural subdivision, just so that, or put it on the next line so that when someone's reading it, they can see that they have both options.
Well, this was taken from the existing one, which from the Brian Rector had prepared. So. I, I can make it caps or if that makes you happy. It's not a big deal. So with that, I would like to make a motion to rescind resolution number 051722-03.
Second.
Which was.
Effective.
Effective for 18, 20, 23.
What was that resolution?
051722-03.
Perfect. Thank you.
Call the roll.
Swedick?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Thank you.
And then I will move for a resolution. Well, the Board of Trustees, Hinkley Township, Medina County, Ohio, adopting the road district as prescribed in Article 4 of the Medina County Engineering Code for Residential Subdivision Development of Medina County, Ohio. Do you want me to read all this, Martha? Whereas in the interest of preserving public health and general welfare, the president, future residents of Medina County, it was deemed necessary in the opinion of the Medina County Commissioners to adopt general rules and regulations setting standards and requirements in securing the construction of improvements shown on the Plats and Plans as allowed by Section 711.101 of the Ohio Revised Code. And whereas it was further, it was the further opinion of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that through Article 4 of those rules and regulations, a road district per township should be established so as that the political subdivision having the maintenance responsibility of said improvements will have roads constructed compatible to their normal maintenance procedures and the varying, varying topographic and physical conditions of the respective township. Now therefore be resolved by this Board of Trustees in and for Hinkley Township, Medina County, Ohio, that the following rules and regulations setting the criteria to be used within the road district for subdivision developments within said township shall govern all construction pertaining to subdivision from April 18, 2023 forward.
Second. I'm sorry.
Typical street section pavement type deviations from specific, specific deviations from the specifications contained herein requires final approval by the Township Board of Trustees and the adoption of a trustee resolution. Urban subdivisions density greater than one house per acre and eight inch fiber reinforced pavement with three quarter inch dials across the transverse joints on three inch of base stone with a standard subgrade with type 2A curb and curb inlet catch basins and four inch perforated pipe. Road width shall be 25 feet to the backside of the curb, urban residential. Rural subdivision density less than one house per acre, non-conservation development. An eight inch fiber reinforced pavement with three quarter inch dials across the transverse joints on three inch of base stone with standard subgrade with type 2A curb with curb inlet catch basins and four inch perforated pipe. Road width shall be 25 feet to the backside of the curb, urban residential or an eight inch fiber reinforced pavement with three quarter inch dials across the transverse joints on three inch of base stone with a standard subgrade with ditch enclosure and four inch perforated pipe. Road width shall be 22 feet, special residential. Rural subdivisions density less than one house per acre, conservation development. An eight inch fiber reinforced pavement with three quarter inch dials across the transverse joints on three inch of base stone with standard subgrade with type 2A curb with curb inlet catch basins and four inch perforated pipe. Road width shall be 25 feet to the back of the site, to the backside of the curb, urban residential. Sidewalks, the urban section includes sidewalks. Sidewalks would be required with urban subdivisions and not required with rural subdivisions. Cul-de-sacs, center islands with proper drainage are required in permanence cul-de-sacs when a homeowners association accepts maintenance. Boulevards within township road right of ways are forbidden unless permitted by motion of the trustees. Design speed, 25 mile per hour design criteria and 25 mile per hour signs should be used on all minor rural residential roads. Lighting, a street light will be installed and paid for by the developer and the monthly cost will be paid by the township. Street lights will only be installed at the main entrance of the subdivision. Developer will install highly efficient LED directional lighting to minimize light pollution to surrounding property. Only by written agreement with the trustee, by the trustees may this regulation be overridden.
Second.
Second. Seconded by Asher. Please call the roll.
Swedick?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes. Yes.
I will get that text you, Martha.
Thank you. But it's importantly in the packet. Yes, thank you. Again. It's been really good.
I believe that is all I have for service. Have anything else for service?
I do have two items on my agenda for service. One is discussion and decision on an additional stop sign at the intersection of Brookside and Brookhaven. We've got residents there that have expressed concern in that all of the others intersecting roads have stop signs. This one has, only has it on one side, which is causing confusion at the bus stop that exists there. So there are cars that are just going through without stopping. Mike went out, looked at it and had conversation with me and said he does not feel it's necessary to put an additional stop sign there, but I wanted to do my due diligence and bring it to the board.
Well, I saw that and I talked with Chief Center about it. It's actually a police issue and it has to do with road regulations in state of Ohio and sign placement. He's aware of it and he's looking at it and he also has the county looking at it. What he is asking is for information. He wants to speak with the people who registered complaints to find out specifically what their concern is and, you know, what time of day the details about it. So if you would get that to him, I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Um, I don't know why he needs to speak to the county. Those are township roads, aren't they?
The county assists with the placement of signage.
Did you say that it's only on one side? Because I saw it on your agenda also, so I drove through there today and there were, there's a stop sign on both sides.
On Brookside and Brookhaven?
No, on Brookhaven.
Well, that's what I mean. It's on one road, but not both. And there's a cul-de-sac there.
So it's a bus. So you're asking to turn it into a four-way stop?
Uh, that's what this resident is requesting. Um, further, I wanted to see if we have any bids or discussion with engineers on Valley Brook. We've got residents that are requesting that information as well.
I had one call from a resident and I spoke with him already. Valley Brook is on the books for this year and.
We're just waiting on engineers.
Yes.
With the extension, you just have to do a little extra work.
Okay.
Hopefully, hopefully soon here. As I said, until, until she gets that done, I can't really, can't really put it out for bits. Should be very shortly. She said she'll let me know, so.
Okay, perfect.
If you want to forward those to me, I'm more than happy to talk with them.
Well, they're not emails. They're phone calls that I'm getting. So as soon as I'm.
Ask them to call me. You have no problem.
Okay, well, I have no problem talking with them either. Valley Brook discussion, this gentleman's been calling me for some time, couple of years now. Thank you, Jim. That's all I have for Mike.
Anybody from the audience? Yes, sir.
I have a comment on that issue.
If you could just be, for the folks that are listening, go up to the microphone.
And name and address. I need your name.
Yeah, we need your name and the address.
Jim Brastek, 305 Valley Brook Oval, Hinkley. I am the person that called Melissa about the Valley Brook, but the other issue, the four stop signs at Brookhaven and. What is it again?
I know, Brookhaven, Brookside.
Brookside. I've been a resident for 30 years and I was almost in an accident there twice. The, the composition of the area just looks like it should be a four-way stop. And people don't realize that the cars coming aren't going to stop twice. I've almost been in an accident there. Just throwing that in.
Thank you.
Uh, in regards to the, the Valley Brook situation, first of all, I'd like to thank Melissa very much. I came here first in about 2012 and asked what would happen with my road, which was falling apart and nothing ever happened. I came again in October of 2018 and those board members at that time said that is at the top of our list. And it's now 2023. The end of my driveway has completely collapsed because the concrete from the road in front of it is broken. There's no sense me paving my driveway when the road would just cause it to break again. When it was first talked about that there would be the repaving of it, I thought the whole thing would be repaved. Now we're talking one, two, three different projects. Is that correct?
At this point, I think it's two. Potentially two. It's, it's what the engineers will, the engineers will come to us with different options.
Okay, so we did the first section around the bend and then we did up to Willow Brook and now they're talking Willow Brook only to Brookhaven and not up the cul-de-sac?
It's going to go past Brookhaven, probably halfway up to the cul-de-sac. We're going to be ending at a set of bases. That's the plan.
Okay.
We can only do so much with what the budget will allow.
Yeah, I, and I really do understand that. And at the same time, I've heard that since 2012, that it's all that the budget will allow. And in the meantime, property values have been heard. I put my house on the market once and a few buyers came by and said, oh my God. No, we're not interested. This, this just looks like a dump with this road. So I'd just like to be heard. It's, it's an eyesore. It's terrible. It really, really needs to be taken care of this year. Thank you. And again, I want to thank Melissa. She has been extremely helpful, extremely professional, has done a great job staying in contact with me when, and I'm not speaking of Mr. Swedick or Mr. Asher, but previous board members I was ignored by. So Melissa, great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anything else for service? We are free to go if you so desire. Be good. Do you want to go to you?
Yeah.
Uh, we'll move on to zoning.
Um, if I may, I'd like to have Mr. Wilson speak. He has a presentation that he has put together behalf of the liquor permit application that he'd like to speak to. You know, that was on your agenda, trustee Swedick, but if we could be mindful of his time and bop him up, I would appreciate it.
That is fine. Mr. Wilson.
Okay, thank you very much. The downtown renewal group G5 investments have applied for a liquor license. What is currently a vacant building, but it was a gun shop and I guess years ago it was a hardware. And their, their plans is to turn it into a restaurant. So they've applied for a liquor license and what happened is the Department of Commerce representative came by the other day and, and left for the township a application. And I just read this so you know what's happening. The division of liquor control is required to notify any church, school, library, public playground or township park that is located within 500 feet of a proposed permit premises. And so Veterans Park up here at the corner of our community is right next door. So obviously they're within 500 feet or I should say we are within 500 feet. And so I'm asking if the trustees have no objection, they would pass a motion that the trustees do not object to liquor permit at that location. Just as a little more information for you, the new Charter School was served the same notice as was the Lutheran Church. Lutheran Church is probably the closest. I actually measured the distance to the Charter School on the highway, Medina County Highway website, and I thought it was farther away than 500 feet, but that's not an issue tonight. I'm just reporting what I did. And the Suzanne and I were a little concerned about Bruggers Park over here, but that's over 500 feet away, so that won't be an issue. So the only issue that I present to you tonight is to consider no objection to liquor permit on the building that's adjacent to Veterans Park.
So two parts to that. Thank you for being here because I didn't anticipate you being here, so I thank you for that. The first is the trustees typically don't have any say in a liquor permit. This is just for the, the public's knowledge. The reason this, this is for us is because it's within that 500 feet of our park. The second question that I had asked you here, but I'd like just for you to answer.
Sure.
For the, the public's knowledge is with this liquor permit, are they able to use it anywhere on the property?
Well, I asked Richard Carpenter, who was the agent with the liquor control today. And it's my understanding that, I mean, they still would have to apply for it. But if, if they would decide not to put the restaurant there and put it in another building or build a new building, they would still have to get permission from the liquor control to move it. But they don't lose it. I don't, I don't believe anyway.
Let's say they wanted to put it on, on the back end of the parcel. And the lots haven't been combined yet.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a lot. If, if the township is, they have no objection to this. They've still got to have, in this building they're talking about moving to, they've got to have a to get zoning's got to okay it for restaurants. And then secondly, Medina County's got to give them an occupancy permit. So I mean, this is kind of the first. It's a related step, but they could obtain the, in fact, I asked Richard today, I said, well, does that mean, you know, they, they just, they've got the license? And he said, no, he said, they're on a list. And they may not be at the top of the list. But when they move to the top of the list, they get a call and say, okay, you're, you've been approved by everybody in your community. You're ready to take this liquor. You're ready to take this liquor license. And that that person, not these folks necessarily, but a person says, oh, gosh, we've had trouble getting, you know, the building done. Go ahead and issue it. We'll be ready in two months. And and Carpenter, he said, no, no, we never issue a liquor license in the future. You've got to be ready to go when when we call you. So it's a long ways off, but the first step is to make sure the township is okay with having a liquor license next to Veterans Park. That's.
And it's my understanding, I don't know if you know if I'm right or wrong, but my understanding that there's only so many of these in the county. So they're applying for this now to make sure that they get it because he did say, you know, a winery or a brewery or a restaurant. So that's probably why they are moving forward with this right now.
Well, I think what's happened, I I don't know if it's county or township, but I know we're going to lose two facilities that when Drug Mart comes in. And so those are going to pop up here in the next few years. But I I really don't know that answer for sure, but I think you're right. I think there's a limited number.
Okay.
Can I just clarify something?
Sure.
The original notice we have and what we've traditionally received is we are requesting or waiving a hearing. So that's what it is. This board does not have any determination whether or not a liquor permit is granted. I just want to clarify that for the audience. It's that if there is an objection and there potentially could be an objection due to the location of the the permit being requested, then the township could request a hearing.
That's correct.
In front of the liquor board.
That's correct.
So that is the process. Not that you guys are going to say yea or nay on this. I want to just clarify.
Well, I I'm sorry if I misled you. I didn't mean.
Just leave me. I think it was just a a kind of a an idea here that that.
By whom?
No, I'm just saying, I just wanted to clarify and simplify the interpretation of what the letter is.
Okay, I could have read the whole letter, but you're absolutely correct. If you have no objection, then it just goes through the process. If, and I say you, I mean the township. If the township has an objection to being next to Veterans Park, then we request a hearing.
In front of the liquor.
That's right.
Mr. Wilson, are all of those parcels now consolidated to one parcel?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Well, Martha, let me ask you this. The trustees have just said they don't okay this. Who okay's this?
The liquor board.
No, no. I that's not the question I'm asking you. It says, we do not object to this permit.
We do not request a hearing.
Right, you're not requesting a hearing.
Well, let me clarify.
I have the same thing.
I know.
Check mark here. I know it says, we do not request a hearing.
These, and I understand, Tom, these these don't traditionally go through zoning. They go to the police department usually.
They know about it.
Department will determine if there's a potential liability or concern due to the location. I mean, it's good for it to go like this. I'm not indicating that there's anything wrong in the way it's being presented, but I just want to kind of just simplify it and say that.
Thank you. But the problem I'm asking, having here is someone has to check this box.
And it's actually me.
Okay, well, thank, thank you. Thank you for answering that.
Okay, but it's always that you review it with the trustees and the police department to make sure before I check a box that I make sure that there's no overwhelming concerns or reason to review it further at a hearing with the liquor board.
Have we heard from the police department with regard to this license?
Yeah, everybody is notified. We've notified the police. I talked to them today.
Did they have an opinion to offer on this?
He said he wanted to look at it.
Okay, and what is our timeframe to move forward on this based on that?
We've got thirty days.
Okay.
Yes, we postmark by May twelfth.
Okay. Well, it would be my opinion to speak with the police department personally and see what their opinions are on it before we move forward, if we have till May twelfth.
Yes, that was my intent. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
No, you're welcome. Try to keep you posted as this downtown renewal continues forward.
Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah.
So moving on to the rest of zoning, I had a request from BZ alternate. He's brand new to our board, Robert Romanofsky, to attend to allow an extension to for his sunshine law training to June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. It seems they're only offering them monthly and he can't get in until June twenty-sixth.
Is there anybody else affected by that?
He's the only one who has offered the request, so.
I don't object to that.
I don't object.
Okay.
You know, I mean, just as an FYI, when I was doing my sunshine training, I signed up for a time also, but then you can go in there and you can take it whenever you want. There is a link, so you can take it whenever you want. You don't have to plan your schedule around that class.
Is it a quiz that you take or is it a recording? Because when I used to do it, it was before COVID and it was sent to recording. Okay. Okay, well, I will speak with him about it.
It has the, you have to answer questions throughout so that they know you're there. Yeah.
Perfect. I will let him know. We have your, the zoning's first quarter report here. We've had two variances, eleven parcel combo splits, which I think a large part of that was the the new parcel here next to Veterans Memorial Park. Five accessory buildings, five decks, three gazebos and three new residences for a total of four thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars. Actually, let's do this. Total total collected in the zoning office for twenty twenty-three in the first quarter was six thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So that's that information for you. Moving on to cemeteries, I have their their first quarter report as well. And it looks like we've had a total of four lots sold. And our first quarter revenue is three thousand three hundred and three dollars. Any questions on that? No, Suzanne does a great job on that. Perfect. Moving right along, I just wanted to clarify, the Medina Post had posted that ODOT was going to move forward with the traffic study in front of the new Hinkley Elementary School. And actually, they are, what I had said was that they are looking into it. I've had conversation with ODOT and further with the Highland School Board. They are working collectively with me to determine how we can reduce some of the traffic that we're seeing on Ridge Road. ODOT said that that really was a responsibility of the Highland School District, and so we we are working on that. So I just wanted to clarify that. Wanted to see what the trustees thought about having discussion about the green space levy. I know this is a directive from the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee audit and results from the public. And I figure if we are going to move forward on this for a potential fall or even spring next year, we really should start having conversation as it pertains to the green space levy and see what the trustees felt. They wanted to look into it, dive in and have some conversation about it. The premise was that the township would garner green space based on the funds that were provided via the levy. And Martha, I'm sure can add to that because she was a proponent to it.
You want to start looking at land that could be possible for it, for something to go on the ballot? Am I understanding that correctly?
I want to know if we want to put a green space levy on the ballot so that we can pursue the conservation of green space in Hinkley Township for future generations.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. I know I've spoken with Martha in it in the past because I believe she was on the committee. Were you on the committee?
For the green space levy?
Ron Garrett was the trustee at the time and it was his idea. And then he formed a small steering committee, which was Quentin Tiff, Walter Robb, myself and and Ron. I think I said if I'm forgetting anyone, it's been a number of years and that was in two thousand and six.
Just a few years ago.
I will, I will just say I I'm opposed to it. I I taxes. Again, I I feel like a lot of people feel like I do. I moved out here to get away from government. Government intervention, government taxes. More and more cost a thing. I don't think it's an effective way to do that project. We're a township. We're not, we're not a city. We're a township. We don't have the resources to be maintaining that, to take care of it in its best interest. I think that there are other, I mean, it takes away, if we do that, it takes away from money that we need for other things. Road infrastructure. Those kind of things that we would be able to use those tax dollars for. I'd rather see some alternative options where maybe people who have the wherewithal to do that, to create those green spaces, do it. There there's organizations and and funding that's out there for that kind of thing. I don't think it should be on the township to do that. And that that's my personal opinion. And it, you know, take it for what it's worth.
So the funding, in my mind, based on what I've garnered, is that the funding from the levy itself would fund the purchase and and upkeep of these lands. Now, I just want to do my due diligence based on the survey results and and looked into it. And I think ultimately, if it's a levy, it goes to the people of Hinkley. They get to determine if they would support it or not.
But who's determining what's being purchased by that? How are you saying, well, I'm gonna buy Mr. Pearl's property. I'm not buying yours, though.
Well, the stewards of the township are right here. Would be the trustee, the board of trustees would make that determination based on the funding that would be available and the property cost analysis. You know, there is much to consider.
I actually, I I agree with both of you. I see both of your points on this. And I do agree with you, Melissa, that that was something that was in the survey and that was in the sixty percent, right? Of people that wanted to see that. I'm sure I'm right. Sixty-six point four percent were for it. I also agree with you, Jack. I think that it people, people like coming out here so that you don't have the government control. But if this is something that goes on the levy, it's something that the people would decide yes or no on. That would be my thoughts on it. I agree, taxes just went up, so I think what people say in in one survey may be different with how they vote, but we don't know until we we do something like that and put it on the ballot.
Agreed.
Can I, so something we learned because it did fail. And the reason it failed because the trustees and it wasn't a particular trustee or any individual, but response was is that people were not comfortable with a board of trustees making the decision of what land to purchase or conserve. The other issue at the time was in two thousand and six, land was much less expensive than it is now. And a one mil levy now is bringing in roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's not going to buy much land in Hinkley Township. Now, that shouldn't be a reason to do or not do it. But it would take probably a decade to buy large enough tracts of land for it to make an impact. And in that meanwhile, a property owner is likely may or may not be able to wait a decade for that. But one of the things that we did learn after the fact was that we have so many entities. We have the Western Reserve Land Conservancy. We have the Cleveland Metro Parks. We have the Rocky River Watership Partners, and this is what they do. They reach out, they talk to people about conservation and land and to work in conjunction with them, whether it's financially or, you know, communicating. They are good stewards of the land. We cannot get into the business of running and maintaining large tracts of land. We just can't do it, but we can work with those partners. And these were the comments that came back to us when the levy failed. There just wasn't a plan in place. So before I put anything on the levy, if you can consider doing that, you really have to have a really good plan to present to the residents of Hinkley to get their support.
And if I am remembering correctly, wasn't it the township who did not want the land donation from Mr. Gibson when he was trying to donate that to the township? And it took some work to get the Metro Parks to take it?
The Metro Parks didn't take it. The Metro Parks didn't, didn't, they they kind of declined some of the terms that Mr. Gibson wanted in place for his land donation in the township. It is the townships.
But the township did not want it. They were trying to find the met, they were trying to get the Metro Parks.
Well, I think Chris Colina spoke kind of just what I said. We're not in the park business, but we have some, we have some really good friends that do it well. And and if the goal is to preserve land and create green space, it is to work in conjunction with those entities. It and it can be a green space levy, but you you need to bring these stakeholders into this conversation. They know what they're doing.
I completely agree, and I think that that would be the the premise to move forward with that we we would work in conjunction with those entities. But to answer your question, Monique, the trustees were never against having garnering the donation from Mr. Gibson. We just wanted to make sure, and he wanted to make sure that he was exploring all of his options. We never told him, no, we didn't want it. We were very grateful and still are very grateful for his donation. So we can think about it and come back and have further conversation. I have an entire file folder here that everyone can peruse. But I I would agree that we would have to probably better define it or redefine it for twenty twenty-three versus when it was discussed in nineteen ninety-six.
Two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six. Must have missed heard you now that you moved all the way to the other side of the room, Martha. The TIF discussion, I just wanted to have some clarification. I actually had a call yesterday with Bethany Detler, I forgot her name right this time. And Brian Cooper, who is a municipal advisor that Bethany works with at Medina County Economic Development. He works specifically with public financing tools. And he, I I was looking for clarification because at the special meeting last Tuesday, there was commentary that we would not fit the criteria for TIF and that the county would have to approve it. And there are actually twelve different types of TIFs. And the TIF that was specifically discussed in our meeting two weeks ago by Bethany would support the development of the commercial property that was shown here by the group that wants to develop the new large parcel next to Veterans Memorial Park. And what it is, is it's an infrastructure opportunity whereby the developer would pay for and install water infrastructure or any other type of infrastructure, whether it's new lights, new sidewalks. And the township trustees would just enter into a TIF agreement with that developer. The TIF agreement would say that we would then collect the property taxes on that new property, which Bethany is saying could be approximately valued very high in the millions of dollars. New property taxes from the property would then be reimbursed back to the developer for his money spent for the infrastructure. So it it's a very good program. I'd be happy to answer any questions if the trustees have them. This gentleman that I spoke with gave me just, it's only three things that have to be done. There, it's not a hard process. It does not involve the county in any way, shape or form because of the type of TIF. There, it's not a hard process. It does not involve the county in any way, shape or form because of the type of TIF it is. And like I said, I'm happy to provide the information that I've garnered.
The issue I have with it is, well, first of all, is there even a handful of them in Medina County? Or any townships in Medina County? As far as I know, none, no Medina.
There are 1,200 in Ohio.
I said in Medina County.
I don't know about Medina County.
So 1,200 in Ohio, that's I'm going to go back to, those are in cities where they're trying to get people to invest in impoverished areas.
That is not a criteria.
That's the purpose of a TIF is to entice development in an impoverished area, to bring businesses in where businesses don't want to go. That's what that's for. What you're in effect doing now, you're siphoning off taxes and, and I, I'm sorry, I represent these people in this community where I don't want them to be taxed to death, especially for something that they haven't essentially agreed to. So the taxes are being funneled off and paid back to the person who's investing and not going to the community. And we're drawing taxes away from the school. Now, the school has to make up that money some way. They're going to put another levy on the ballot.
Put another levy on the ballot anyway, and taxes are going to be used for water infrastructure, whether it's five years or 30 years from now, whether you get it via a grant or via a TIF or via ARPA funds. It's, it's going to be tax dollars in some capacity.
Well, I think the community should weigh in before they, we do anything in that regard.
I really would encourage you to learn a little bit more about the TIF before we have further conversation.
We, as a township, who's going to oversee it? Who's going to provide oversight to make sure that they're doing and complying with they, what they need to do to receive their payments through the TIF program?
I think these are all great questions, and I would encourage you to speak with Medina County Economic Development. I had a 30 minute call with them yesterday and with this Brian.
Oh, I looked into it, and that's why I'm asking these questions.
I'm saying there are 12 different types of TIFs, and it's my understanding that it's a very simple process and that there might be some confusion about the type of TIF that you're looking into versus the one that they're discussing.
I know the answer to your question because I have been researching these since, since the last meeting. Tree in Medina County. I believe one is Medina Township, one is Medina City, and York Township.
No, that's not.
No?
There's an expired. There was an expired TIF in the city of Wattsworth.
Okay.
It's no longer in, it, it's been fulfilled.
Okay.
The city of Medina
Okay.
has one currently, and I think that's part of their Main Street Medina reinvestment. And then and these, this comes from Bethany. So then she said there was one in York, but when I contacted the York fiscal off, York Township Fiscal Officer yesterday to kind of get an idea of what was involved, she was unawares that York Township even had a TIF. Now, the fiscal officer would know that. So I'm, I'm, I'm really unclear, and I have a question into the York Township trustee as to that. But Medina County is only ever including the mysterious York Township TIF, has only ever had three TIF agreements.
Well, we talked about our leadership when we were saying we were the only place in Medina County that still offers a virtual meeting, let alone a YouTube video. I mean.
If, if this was such a great program, I think it would be prolific throughout the county. People would have them everywhere.
I think that it's, I think that you made a statement at the last meeting saying that we didn't fit the criteria and the county needed to approve it. And I'm saying to you, I, I'm encouraging you to look into it further before we offer any more commentary so that we know, are all on the same page as to what exactly this TIF is. Because we don't want to give misinformation to the public.
Right, because right now, we don't know anything. We don't know.
I do. Like I said, I just sat.
Mr. Pearl.
Well.
Thank you.
Can you redefine TIF for the community? It's tax incentive.
Increment.
Tax increment financing.
Thank you.
We don't know anything because we don't know yet what areas are going to be impacted by it. We don't know what the cost of it is. So we don't really know what the liabilities are between the county, the parks, the schools, the township, because like Bethany said, it has potentials to be worth millions of dollars once it's done. So we can't even begin to really discuss this until we know the, this information, the cost of the project, and where is it going to go?
I, I again encourage you to have conversation. It would not make sense that the monies that the township would get would be school board monies, right? The school board collects school board monies. The township doesn't collect school board monies, so it wouldn't impact the school district.
We get.
Well, it's property tax.
It's property tax specific to Hinkley Township. So whatever monies Hinkley Township would receive, not the school board.
So there was just a recent article on TIFs in the OTA newsletter that everyone should have gotten. And there, there, you know, there's some requirements. It must fulfill a proper public purpose. And then in that, and if you could outline the type of TIF that, that you and Bethany are talking about, that could probably provide a little more.
It's a commercial TIF for the public purpose of the project. It's a.
Well, yes, but there's.
It's for the development of commercial property.
Yes, and that's the definition of a TIF.
And I don't know if it was point four oh or point four one.
Well, in, in statutory, that, that's fine. I mean, that's all outlined, but you know, there regardless of it, we do know estimated costs of a county project is in the range of 1.6 to 2.6 million dollars, right? Those are last year's approximate numbers. So that is the approximate amount is a baseline of what has to be paid back to reimburse a developer, private developer according to a TIF. That's a lot of money, whether it's coming from county, school, township, everything that our property taxes go to. It's, it's a long, likely a long time. And it's a lot of money out of the revenue stream. I, and I would think that, that the first thing the board would want to know is exactly what is the project scope? What are the estimated costs? What's going to have to be reimbursed? I mean, these are very basic questions to start with. What are the, you know, outlining the terms of an agreement? I can forward you the agreement currently in place for the city of Medina. It's lengthy.
Yes.
Yes, it's not, you know, it's not, it's not a small document. It's not a resolution. Let's just put it that.
It is a resolution. It's by resolution.
Melissa, I, I mean, it's not the length of a two line resolution. I'm sorry, I, that. So, um, I mean, I, as a taxpayer, as a resident, as a fiscal officer, those are just some basic questions I have.
I completely agree with you, but I think that this board needs to do their due diligence before we can have those conversations.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't, I think the board has to require the if you bring in individuals to talk to the board as a group, I think that would be very beneficial to ask some of these questions. But I don't think three people talking individually to three people and bringing it back is, is very helpful in this conversation. I, I think you three as a board need to determine who you need to bring in. It might be multiple people, multiple visits. You, you have questions and they need to be answered in order to make a decision that's best for the residents of Hinkley.
Great. Completely agree with you.
Which I think leads us back to, let's see the interest in it to begin with.
On that note, I have to go out of order. I did put in both of your packets, and Martha, you got it also. Jeremy made a couple more edits to that letter after I sent him our changes. And I printed it up so that you could see his edits. They were.
I don't agree with sending this letter right now. I said that at the last meeting, and I'll say it again publicly. In this meeting, we had an email from the gentleman, the developer that is looking at developing this corner. And he is encouraging us to hold off so that he can garner more information and have pertinent conversations, educational conversations with this board. And my next agenda item was additional.
So let's not leave this.
Two additional grant options.
Leave this. Hold on.
From this, from Mr. Conrad. Medina County Engineers Department.
If we send this out, we're going to find out if there's enough interest in to even move forward with discussions on this.
I understand that point completely, but I think that this is a scare tactic letter. It doesn't go into what we are working on collectively and that there is a gentleman now who sent us an email over the weekend. I think, I can't remember the day, Friday or Saturday, who is a developer who is asking us to hold off on this so that we could potentially incorporate his information into the letter. Wouldn't that be a viable option for the folks that we're sending this to?
To, to say that we're going to do a TIF?
To say that we're looking into additional options outside of grants. We have to make up our mind before we can send the letter is what I'm saying. We haven't made a decision with regard to a TIF, so it's very difficult to send a letter to property owners and say, this is what you're, it's going to cost you. And by the way, the township's looking into grants. What if we say, you know, we may add that we're looking into a TIF option. We may add other details based on our conversation with this developer. I just think it's premature to send the letter. I understand that you want to garner what these property owners would like to see, if they would be, you know, in support of water or not. But I just think that in my mind, it's kind of got going out of order, if you will. I think we need to garner as much information as we can so that when we're sending a letter to our property owners and this, and whether it's business or personal, we are giving them everything we have. We've done our due diligence. This is everything. That's past practice here. We try to do all of our diligence and make all the decisions so that when we're reaching out to the public, we're giving them everything we have.
I disagree that it's out of order. I think that this is the correct order. This is the information that we have from the Medina County Sanitary Engineer. With the cost of the project, we're going to send it out to all of the different parcels possibly impacted by this. So, and we had already agreed that we were going to send it out, so.
I didn't agree to send it out ever. The board did. Oh, once again. Next. So as I was saying about grant funding options.
Sending the letter out or not?
We, we are sending the letter out.
Okay, as this is the letter then for the minutes I can, is this the green fund letter?
This one. Yes.
That, that is with Jeremy's edits.
So this is, as you said, a county letter. So the county can determine necessity, but a TIF doesn't have anything to do with the county. Just want to make.
They're not mutually exclusive, Melissa. They're not mutually exclusive.
I'm just making it clear. A TIF has nothing to do with the county, so it is exclusive to the township.
The county has to be involved because they're going to take that water line and assume the maintenance of it.
And garner the monies from it to assume the maintenance of it.
So they're involved.
It doesn't matter how it gets in.
All right, next. Please continue.
I, I was trying to. I can be interrupted, but I can interrupt back. So the grant opportunities that I have here from Andy Conrad at the engineers office are specific to water infrastructure. And what he said is that he heard that the state is considering another, another round of funding through the 2021 HB 168 DOD Grant Program.
Do we have those? I'm sorry, do we have those?
No, I will make sure that I get them to you. I've attached two scans from the prior program for your use, and that's why I didn't give them to you because they're from the prior program. If another round of funding in this, there is another round of funding in state budget, you will want to be ready to submit your project. Again, this program is not a sure thing, but is being talked about by legislators for the next budget. So because it wasn't a hundred percent, I didn't feel the need to run copies of it, but I want to let you know that it sounds like it, it may be coming up to the state for another opportunity that the township could potentially use.
What's the name of that brand again?
2021 HB 168 DOD Grant Program. Okay, and I was contacted by Highland Schools. They have a spring cleanup that the football players do every single year. They are looking for people in our township that might be in need. So you've got a neighbor or, you know, a family member that needs their yard cleaned up. Please contact me. I will get you in touch with the right people at Highland Schools. Those football players come out, they tackle it literally in like a morning, and everyone is very, very pleased with it. It's a great way for our, our, our football players to help the community, and the community just loves it. Just a reminder that the May 2 trustee meeting will be held in the old fire station bay because elections will be happening in this building, and we will be announcing the citizen of the year at that meeting. And there will be no trustee meeting on May 16. And that's all I have.
Trustee Asher.
Okay, it's that time of year again. I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution, a resolution authorizing the fiscal officer to forward $2,149.29 to Kimball for the Hinkley Township unpaid trash 2022. T16001 dash first half of 2022 property taxes. In accordance with paragraph 6.1 of the contract, any delinquent charges that are collected pursuant to ORC 505 dot 31B specific to assessments are set out. $242.57 are from 2021. And $1,714.12 from first half of 2022. And $192.60 is from the second half of 2022 paid with the first half of 2022. In addition, the additional $55.79 in penalties collected by the auditor's office will be received into the general fund.
Second.
Sweated?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
Obviously.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to go back to this letter real quick. One of the things we said at the last meeting that we have agreed upon publicly multiple times is that there shouldn't be one trustee to contact, which is what's written at the bottom of this letter. We had said we were going to have people contact the county if they had questions.
You are correct.
We're referencing the county multiple times.
You are correct. I did not get that changed, so we will contact the county. I will ask Jeremy tomorrow who the contact should be placed in there. Okay. Um, moving into the first half, I'm sorry, first quarter fuel, Kimball fuel surcharge. Remember that came in, in November of last year that we had that fuel surcharge and it went back to the previous quarter as well. So people got hit with the six months. There is still a fuel surcharge. It will be $1.75 per month per home. So 525 for the quarter from February through April of this year. As an FYI, that's actually less than what the fuel surcharge was back in November. So there will be a little bit of a savings on that. And I was waiting to hear back from Greg back, so this is why this is a last minute add to the agenda. The resolutions that Martha had sent us all, I believe she sent them twice last year. The resolutions that Martha had sent us all, I believe she sent them twice last year of, that we needed to start with to raise the threshold of the competitive bid for the ARPA funds. So.
Sorry, what is this?
This is the resolutions that Martha sent us a couple of times last year. You have a copy of it there. Be it resolved by the township trustees of Hinkley Township, whereas this date, April 18th, 2023, trustee Monique Asher will move the adoption of the following resolution. Whereas the township has received a distribution of monies, the ARPA funds, from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA, or the act, and whereas Congress passed the act effective March 11th, 2021. And whereas section 603 created the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund, which among other things appropriated monies to cities, non entitlement units of local government and counties to mitigate the fiscal effects stemming from the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus disease COVID-19. And whereas expenditure of ARPA funds is subject to the federal uniform guidance requirements set forth in 2 CFR 200. And whereas the township is a non federal entity under the definition set forth in 2 CFR 2, 200.1. And whereas 2 CFR 200.318 requires all recipients of federal funds to maintain documented procurement standards and policies. And whereas pursuant to 2 CFR 200.320 ALII, a non federal entity may award micro purchases without soliciting competitive price or rate quotations if the non federal entity considers the pride to be reasonable based on research, experience, purchase history, or other information and documents that non federal entity files accordingly. And whereas pursuant to CFR 200.320 ALII, a non federal entity is responsible for determining and documenting an appropriate micro purchase threshold based on internal controls, an evaluation of risk and its documented procurement procedures. And whereas pursuant to CFR 200.320 ALIV, a non federal entity may self certify on an annual basis to micro purchase thresholds not to exceed $50,000 and maintain documentation to be available to a federal awarding agency and auditors in accordance with 2FR 200.334. And whereas pursuant to CFR 200.320 ALIV, such self certification must include, one, a justification for the threshold. Two, a clear identification of the threshold. And three, supporting documentation which for public institutions may be a higher threshold consistent with the state law. And whereas under Ohio law, townships are required to conduct competitive bidding, purchases and contracts if such purchases and contracts exceed the following threshold. One, purchase of materials, machinery and tools to be used in constructing, maintaining and repairing roads and culverts where the amount involved exceeds 50,000 RC 5549 dot 21. Two, contracts for the maintenance or repair of roads where the amount involved exceeds $45,000. The board must advertise once, not later than two weeks prior to the letter, lettering of the contract in a newspaper of general circulation in the township. The award must be to the lowest responsible bidder, RC 5575 dot 01. Three, contracts for the construction and erection of a memorial building or monument when the amount involved exceeds 50,000, RC 511 dot 12B. Four, contracts for equipment for fire protection, mechanical, mechanical resuscitation, underwater rescue and recovery and communication estimated to exceed $50,000, RC 505 dot 37 and 505 dot 376. Five, contracts for street lighting systems where the cost exceeds $50,000, RC 515 dot 01. Six, contracts for street lighting improvements where the cost exceeds $50,000, the board shall accept the lowest and best bid. If the successful bidder meets the requirements of section 153 dot 54 of the revised code. The board may reject all bids, RC 515 dot 07. Seven, contracts for building modifications for energy savings pursuant to RC 505 dot 264 where the estimated cost exceeds $50,000 with certain exceptions. Award must be the lowest and best bidder in accordance with provisions of RC 307 dot 86 to 307 dot 92. Eight, contracts for private sewage collections tiles where the cost exceeds $50,000, RC 521 dot 05. The successful bidder must meet requirements of RC 153 dot 54. Whereas pursuant to CFR 200.320 ALIV, the township desires to adopt higher micro purchase thresholds than those identified in 2 CFR 200.67, 200.321A and 48 CFR 2 dot 101. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the board that, one, in compliance with the uniform guidance and specifically to CFR 200.318, the township adopts the attached uniform guidance procurement policy to be used for the expenditures of ARPA funds. Two, in accordance with 2 CFR 200.320 ALIV and the applicable provisions of Ohio law, the township hereby self certifies the following micro purchases thresholds, each of which is a higher threshold consistent with state law. Under 2 CFR 200 dot 320 ALIBC for reasons set forth in recitals to this resolution. A, $50,000 for the purchase of materials, machinery and tools to be used in constructing, maintaining and repairing roads and culverts. B, $45,000 for contracts for the maintenance of or road, or repair of roads. C, $50,000 for contracts for the construction and erection of a memorial building or monument. D, $50,000 for contracts for equipment for fire protection, mechanical resuscitation, underwater rescue and recovery and communication. E, $50,000 for contracts for street lighting systems. F, $50,000 for contracts for street lighting improvements. G, $50,000 for contracts for building modifications for energy savings, subject to the exception set forth in RC 307 dot 86 to 307 dot 92. And H, $50,000 for contracts for private sewage collection tiles. Two, the self certification made herein shall be effective as the date hereof and shall be applicable until the end of, is it going to be the 2023 Martha, fiscal year of the township, but shall not be applicable to federal financial assistance awards issued prior to April 18th, 2023, including ARPA funds. Three, in the event that the township receives funding from federal grantor agency that adopts, that adopts a threshold more restrictive than those contained herein, the township shall comply with the more restrictive threshold when expending such funds. Four, the township shall remain documentation to be made available to a federal awarding agency and pass through entity and the auditors in accordance with 2 CFR 200.334.
Second, any discussion? Oh, finish.
No, that's it. The rest is just a certification.
Okay. Discussion.
I'm just wondering why I was the liaison for this ARPA funding and have no knowledge of this resolution.
You were all emailed this resolution twice.
Last year. What, what brought it to our table today?
That I can't tell you, but you guys were provided this. I sent it twice via Montville because it was the next step in the ARPA.
The next step according to legal counsel was to garner the bid and make the resolution. I gave you both, I gave all of you that email in November of last year, I believe.
Yeah, I spoke with him, with Greg Beck, and he said, you know, we're going to be getting in the estimates from the county. So this was appropriate to do it at this time.
But you made me the liaison. I just want to clarify.
We did. I mean, I, I didn't realize we're going to get so strict with it right now. I mean, Jack's the road liaison and you've got several things on your agenda, so I don't think that we need to stick that, that anyways.
Any issues with the resolution?
I.
I don't even know what.
Call the roll please.
Sweated?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
Yes. Next time, if you could email the resolution so I could review it before the meeting, that would be great.
I would have loved to. That's why you guys just got the email from Suzanne around two o'clock today. That's when I just got it.
Martha, did you, do we need to do anything for that position?
Did I?
Do we need to do?
And it is in your email. It's what Martha sent us twice last year.
Last year, not today.
Please. Ladies. Boston Road Bid we took care of as well as the truck. The Town Hall wastewater agreement is on hold while Rick Verholtz, he wants to make a couple of minor changes to it. So I'm going to hold that. I prepared something for you in the packet about the electric aggregation agreement, program rather. And I'll read it into the record. Hinkley Township is covered by the Medina County Electric Aggregation Program. The county selected Energy Harbor to manage their electric aggregation program. The current cost per kilowatt hour in the program is 6.05 cents. And that rate is a fixed price through May of 2025. All residents were automatically enrolled in the program unless they specifically opted out. To determine if you're in the program, please review your most recent bill to see if it includes a section indicating charges from Energy Harbor. It should also show the Energy Harbor logo. If you do not see that, you are not likely enrolled. To enroll or if you have any questions regarding the program, residents can call Energy Harbor at 866-636-3739. And I'm going to ask the board if there's any objection having Suzanne put this on the website. For anyone who has any interest in determining whether or not they're involved in it.
I see no problem with them.
Any questions? Very good. And we also already spoke about the liquor permit.
I don't have an email from Suzanne with this resolution.
It was the change to the agenda that Suzanne sent out.
This time I'll make a motion.
Did you want to? I'm sorry.
Which?
The fiscal officer assistant.
I spoke with Martha.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Motion to pay the bills in the amount of $14,540.73.
Second.
Seconded by Asher Law in favor. I.
Hi.
I wanted to do a quick recap on the annexation. I got sidetracked on that. Is there any way we can do that?
The hearing was held, we testified, and now it's in the county's hands. Is there anything else you want to add to that?
Well, I think a lot of people are asking me what, when, how much time the county has. So the county has 30 days to make a decision from last Tuesday. And I too wanted to thank everyone that testified, including myself. Because I didn't know I was going to testify. And I think that I brought up a very good point in that they were saying that CRA was an issue for why they wanted to be annexed. But in truth, RBZ approved their project in December 2021. The CRA was denied in June 2022, but they still purchased the property and everything went through with that purchase and was finalized in December 2022. So they purchased the property knowing that the CRA had been denied at that point. That's all.
Anything else from the board? Anyone from the public?
Do you, I need a motion for Sean Landis. If you turn your page over.
Sorry, I blew right past you. Go ahead, ma'am.
No.
Motion to re, a move to reimburse Officer Sean Landis' biannual health insurance opt out payment in the amount of $1,200 for the department's collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Seconded by Asher Law in favor.
Hi.
Fund status?
Fund status is currently at $6,961,445.92, of which $1,094,908.79 are cold investments and $5,866,537.13 in primary checking.
Very good. This time I'll make a move to adjourn at 7:55 PM.
You're not going to take any public comment?
I asked. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Got to be quicker than that.
Good evening. My name is John Kales, 1809 Ridge Road, Texas, Texas, Texas. How about Texas time? So first off, I wanted to talk about the green space levy. And the idea of putting a levy on the ballot and having us vote on it or whatever. I already pay taxes to the metro parks, so I don't really want to do that again. Being again, that's what they do. So I don't want to pay taxes there. It also takes property out of the hands of the public. And off the market for purchase, which also makes my property more scarce and makes my property taxes go up, which I don't want that either. And then the property that then goes into the green space no longer generates property taxes itself. And it can't house someone that could possibly pay income taxes. And then we would have to pay more taxes on it to maintain it after the purchase. So that sums up my, my idea about the green space levy. I see absolutely no value in it to us. So the TIF stuff, I started thinking about that a little bit. And, you know, the, the gentleman here that was speaking on behalf of the property owners, I think they had a lawyer and an architect that were here. And they had a really nice shiny plan and it looked all cool and stuff. And I enjoyed listening to that on the, on the YouTube. But it's, it got me thinking a little bit about what it might mean for the township. So after we would financially, we agreed to financially supplement the costs associated with the business. Well, then their success immediately becomes a responsibility of the township. Should they not see the return they anticipate, will we have to compromise our standards to recoup our money, I guess? He mentioned a lot about parking. I think anything, anything that goes down there, everyone knows that parking is a major issue down here. And that gentleman made reference into talking to, I believe it was the church and some of the other businesses and allowing each other to kind of use the parking lots between the two of them or the three of them or however many. That's cool, I guess. But some of the things they were talking about, we're going to generate a lot of people. And we saw kind of Buzzard Day was kind of bad with getting crowds over to the, the elementary school, I think. It was a little bit rough. So it would definitely be a concern that if they couldn't bring the people down there, that they wouldn't be able to be financially viable, right? So I'm kind of putting that together that it's possible that that could be an issue. And that's really one lawsuit away. They're talking about serving, serving liquor or, or wine there. I mean, that really is one lawsuit away in one of those parking lots from putting the kibosh on that. So looking at it that way. If it wasn't viable, I don't know what kind, I'm sure these people are great business people, but I look at, if it was me, maybe I wouldn't make the best business moves. And then my bad business moves would then be the responsibility of the township as well. Like I borrow your money and I have it. And if I'm failing, what does that mean for the township residents? Now they have to ensure that my business becomes successful. One of the things that the architect glossed over was the idea of putting apartments, second floor apartments down there. And we love to talk about the comprehensive plan a lot, the survey. 95.4% of the people surveyed were against multifamily housing. So I know we really like that. I like, in this case, I really like that number as well. I don't want apartments. So I don't want to supplement my tax dollars for anyone that wants to put apartments downtown. So that's it. It's just some concerns that I see that, that could end up coming back if, if we were to go ahead with that. So thank you very much.
Sean, I'm just trying to understand how you see the TIF because you're saying they're borrowing money from us.
Well, essentially it would be like a loan, right, that, that they would take out through our tax dollars is the way that I understand it is, is we would supplement them. Isn't that correct?
No.
Okay, please help me understand.
So they would invest the dollars for the water infrastructure.
Okay.
Then based on the property value increase.
Sure.
Those property taxes from the increase of the property value would come to the township and we would reimburse the developer.
After that. So it wouldn't be beforehand.
Correct.
It wouldn't be beforehand. Okay. So I guess I'm.
So they pay their property tax and the county kicks back 75%. So they pay their property tax, and the county kicks back 75% of that to the township. The township then.
Then pays the developer.
Service payments to the developer.
Okay. So is that just on, I know we're talking about water now, but there was the idea of the development earlier. Is any of the development part of that, or is it just the water?
The TIF can be used for multi-different types of infrastructure. It doesn't have to be water infrastructure. It could be sidewalks, sewers, lighting. There are many different types of infrastructure that it could be utilized for.
Okay. All right. Cool. Thank you.
Is that 75% of the incremental property tax or the total property tax?
The excess. Right now, there's a base property tax that exists. And once the, in talking to the county auditor, there actually has to be, the structure has to be built. The project has to be built, constructed, completed. And so it's going to have its new assessment on it with its capital improvements. It's 75% of that additional that's generated by that investment.
And not, not just 75% of Hinkley's share, 75% of the property tax, correct?
That, that was my understanding.
Mine too. And that's why my concern was you're drawing that money from the schools.
Yeah, because in the.
Because our portion of the property tax is miniscule.
The schools, I mean, the schools had to agree. And I'm just using the one, the only agreement I found in Medina County. But multiple entities had to agree to the terms of this one. I'm not, I don't know enough about what's proposed.
I think what Bethany had said was the schools would have to agree if we agreed to a 30-year, but we were talking about a 10-year.
Well, how would a 10-year get paid if it's $2 million plus invested?
It would be a rolling TIF, so it would cover every time a new building would be done, it would start a new TIF.
Within that project area?
Yes.
Within the nine acre. Well, nine acres is not a huge area to generate $2 million increased property taxes over 10 years. I mean, that's just a fact.
Well, I spoke to two.
Those are the details.
It's necessary, it can be done.
It can be done?
According to the numbers that they ran, and they're gonna run some more numbers for us. They need to speak to the developer and garner more numbers from him.
Well, that, you know, again, as I said before, those are really good things to bring to the board and have that individual come in and speak to the board as a whole because.
Absolutely, once they're compiled.
Mr. Pearl.
Richard Pearl, King Road. I'm here as a spokesperson for 350 Hinkley. 350 Hinkley's been a member of the Rocky River Watershed Council for over five years. The township's been a sponsor for two-plus years. And I just wanted to thank you for renewing the sponsorship, the township sponsorship for the council. I think it's so important that you're doing that because of the upcoming modifications that are going on, that have already started on the dam and the lake itself. So thank you very much for that sponsorship. It's very important. I encourage you to be involved and watch what they are doing within our township. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nothing more for the good of the board. I'm moved to adjourn at 8:04 PM. Seconded by Asher all in favor. Thank you, everybody.